Maybe Tim will come in and talk.
Oh, oh.
Do we need six?
Probably.
Well, not hot, but it's close.
It's close enough. I'll take it.
It is like.
No. Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, I have a collar. It's good. It's good. If I do this, Bobby, it's like we both have plans or just we don't have.
You guys do kind of match. I see it. Yeah. Ish.
We should show up with.
Yeah. Okay, I'm gonna call this work session to order at 5:30 PM. Melissa is on Zoom, but is in Anchorage, or will be on Zoom. The school board would like to take this moment to respectfully acknowledge we are residing on the traditional land of the Denai people. Our mission is to provide an excellent equitable education in a safe supportive environment, so all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Burgess?
Here.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Here.
Mr. Doran?
Here.
Ms. Julian?
Here.
Ms. Maple?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mrs. Hardy?
Here.
And Mrs. Burnett is on Zoom.
I'm here.
Thank you.
I will go ahead and pass it off to Dr. Minert and Mr. DeGraw for our FY26 proposed budget presentation.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Maple. We're gonna continue our budget process. Tonight, we'll discuss the proposed budget. The board's already done work around the budgeting processes here. Are already facing some tough cuts. And we'll continue conversations around balancing the budget and the extreme deficit that the district has. Tonight, we'd like to start with the presentation that will give a high-level overview of the proposed budget that's before you. Feel free to ask questions as Mr. DeGraw goes throughout the presentation. Each individual slide might have pertinent information that you might have questions over, so feel free to ask. There are a couple of updates that we've had since the slide deck was posted. We'll be sure to get the updated slide deck into Board Docs after this, but Andy's added a couple of additional items that we think are important for the board and the community to understand the budget process. We'd also encourage board members, after we've had a discussion on the proposed budget, to name some items that they would like some additional information on that we can provide information for the board and the community at future work sessions. That helps us plan out the next several weeks if we know there are specific things that the board would like to dig into. So, we'd like the board to do that this evening as well. So, this time, I'll hand it over to Mr. DeGraw, and we'll go over the proposed budget.
Yeah. All righty. Thank you, Dr. Minert. I'll go ahead and jump into the presentation. As he mentioned, we will entertain questions as we go. And I'm gonna get into presentation mode here. So, just to start out with student enrollment, just a little bit of a historical look back. We've looked at these numbers in prior meetings, especially as we went through school consolidation, but just a review here, going back to 2014. A little more than 14,000 students. Fast forward to current year is the 2025 number, 11,805, and then the projected number that we have is 11,626 for FY26. And then another look at, kind of more of a recent, more recent look at student enrollment. This is comparing projection, the projection that we make in orange compared to actuals in black. So, for FY24, FY25, you see the differences there. The reason why we show this is there's been a pretty consistent trend, especially since I've been here, of actuals coming in lower, sometimes significantly lower than what we have projected. So, and that, as it relates to fund balance, has caused kind of a continual pressure on our fund balances. We typically will have to, we staff at a specific level that we project to, and then when actuals don't come in, the revenue doesn't come in with those projected students, but we're still staffed for that higher level of student count, if that makes sense.
A question from Ms. Hardy, and then Ms. Carol Hubbard.
So, we've had a pretty big change between fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25, and I know a piece of that is because of correspondent schools and not having private school dual enrollment. Is there more to that equation, and then why in fiscal year '26, like, are we projecting that much lower as well?
Yeah, so I think it's a combination, and Dr. Minert can jump in here as well. I think it's a combination of the number of students that I've pegged to the correspondent situation that you referenced, Ms. Hardy, is probably 300 to 400 students. But as you can see, we're down more than that, so I would say it's a demographic issue. We've talked a lot about outmigration from the state, and certainly that's hitting Fairbanks as well, so there is outmigration. So, I would say it's a combination of both the correspondent situation as well as outmigration from the borough. And I think the second part, because of why is such a big drop? Yeah, really, we're comparing the FY25 actual to the projection, so the 11,805 to the 11,626. So, that's about, I think it's 179 student decline. And, yeah, last year, I projected, you know, about a 50 student decline, but we saw 600 student actual decline. So, just, we're kind of forced into being conservative and upping that decline. And hopefully, hopefully, we outperform that projection, but we just don't have the luxury of being able to to project higher than what we are.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
No.
Please continue.
So, then moving to the general fund revenue trend and kind of a similar trend to the enrollment. Ironically, not, I guess not ironically, logically, it follows a similar pattern. So, you know, back to 2014, we were over $220 million. Fast forward to 2026, we're a little bit over $100 million, so nearly, basically, a 30 million drop in revenue. That's a significant number, especially when you take inflation into consideration. And see a similar decline there in 2022 and '23 to COVID, and then we've bounced back a little bit since then. We've seen a bump in borough contributions as well as some supplemental state income. And then that decline you see from 2025 to '26 is mainly attributable to that 600 student decline that we've seen. And so then, just an overall summary of our current-year estimate on the deficit, $16 million. Actually, turned out to be a little bit more than 16 million, is about 16-2, 16-3, but that's the breakdown. Increased expenditures, a little bit over $10 million, and a loss in total revenue of approximately $5.7 million. So, that's what makes up that deficit.
Ms. Julian?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, so that increased revenue for expenditures, and I'm looking at page, I'm sorry, I'm looking at page five.
That one.
Yeah, this one. Okay, so this one is where it's different than our.
Yes, thank you for bringing that. This is one I updated, yes.
Okay, so that increased in revenue.
It's an actual.
Or the, I'm sorry, the increased in expenditures of the 10.3 million, is that primarily our step increases?
Yeah, I would say about 60% of that is salary and step increases, salary, schedule, and step increases, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Then the next slide, going into, looks like we had a, from Mr. Doran. Mr. Doran?
Sorry, Mr. Torin.
Okay, if I can ask, request for maybe a future meeting, if we can have a clean breakout of these, because I know that we have done these in terms of estimates, now we're in the budget, so we should be more clearly.
Yeah, Mr. DeGraw, I'll have that for you tonight.
That's another addition that we made to the presentation here, the subsequent slide, we'll see a breakdown of budget adjustments and reductions. All right, so looking at fund balance, this has been a pretty consistent theme over the past few years. This, there's two different calculations that we look at. The state calculation is a percentage, we're capped by the state at a percentage, 10% of our current-year expenditures. That currently stands at a little more than $11 million. Board policy sets our target between 6% and 8% of that, those general fund expenditures. That would create a range of 11 to 15 million dollars, so we're right there in the lower half of that range.
Ms. Hardy?
Does the borough's cap is actually lower than what the state allows us, or how does that work?
Yeah, so they're jumping to the borough calculation. No, that's, they, they look at it differently, so the state is just a percentage of the general fund. The five funds that are listed here is what the borough tracks. So, it's actually a percentage of the local contribution. And I haven't looked at what that actual dollar amount is, but it's a percentage. I can have that information for the board at the regular meeting tomorrow. It's a percentage of the total local contribution, and I'll have that percentage, and then the actual cap that we're currently at.
Ms. Julian?
Thank you. I had a question about the discrepancy I see here. When I looked at the larger book on page seven, and we don't have to refer to that right now, but the PDF budget book on page seven, it states that our policy for '12 for the general fund, we should have at least two months, which is equivalent to 16.67%. However, in the slide deck, it mentioned 6% to 8% of general fund expenditures. Can you explain that discrepancy?
Yeah, I don't have that language in front of me, Ms. Julian, but that might be referencing like GFAO standards. So, yeah, that would be different than what the board has specifically approved this policy on. GFAO, you know, 16.67%. And that 6% and 8% of current-year general fund expenditures, those would certainly equal different numbers.
And does that equal about two months?
This 6% to 8%, we're right on the low end of that, that's, at the high end, 8% would be maybe a little bit more than a month. Right now, at the low end, we're probably at like three weeks of expenditures.
And then, one last follow-up, what is that 11.2 million fiscal year '24, what percentage is that then?
Yeah, that's probably right at around 6%.
Okay.
Really close to that 6% mark.
Thank you.
So then, yeah, moving to the borough calculation, and this is a list of the five funds that they track. General fund, you might notice a discrepancy between the state calculation, general fund, and this general fund. The borough doesn't allow us to subtract out pending purchase orders, so encumbrances, purchases that are in process. And the state does allow us to subtract those dollars out, so that represents the difference between the two numbers. Transportation, food services, equipment replacement, and risk management are the other funds that are tracked. We're anticipating that the general fund number will be drawn down a certain amount because of that significant student count drop, as well as we anticipate the transportation fund balance going slightly into the negative at our current pace by the end of this year. So, we anticipate these, all of these fund balance numbers to drop by the end of this current school year.
Ms. Julian?
Thanks, just for my understanding, then, so because our state calculation of the fund balance, we're able to take out the encumbered funds, this would be more accurate as to kind of available, is that correct?
No, I would counter that the number with the encumbrances subtracted out would be the more accurate number, because we've, in a sense, we've committed those funds to specific purchases. And the doll, it's usually in the range between $2 and $4 million at any given time of encumbrances that we have outstanding. So, really, those funds have been committed, so I would propose that the state number really is a more accurate.
Okay, yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so that 11.2 million?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
And when we're referencing fiscal year '24, 11.2 million.
Yeah.
Can you help me understand why we're looking at fiscal year '24?
Yeah, so these are audited figures, and so that's the most recent complete year that we have audited. So, as of June 30th, 2024, then we did the audit at the end of summer/fall period of the FY24 school year. We're still in the middle of FY25, and so we won't have the FY25 number until, you know, a little less than a year from now. Which, that does, that makes sense, FY24 is a little old now, but that's, we do it audited numbers.
Ms. Hardy?
Two questions. One's just clarifying, the red means negative?
Yes.
Okay, and then, more just clarifying for maybe other people, and also correct me if I'm wrong. This borough calculation for our fund balance came out of a compromise ordinance when we did have a fund balance, and the borough felt it was too high.
Yes.
And so then, we gave them $8 million, and they started capping our fund balance, and that was like 2017?
Yeah, that was, I would say that was 2018, the end of 2018, yeah.
That's, this didn't exist.
Correct.
That happening, and this was made because they felt the school district had too much money.
Correct, yes, that would be an accurate assessment. I would say the district had in the range of between 20 and 30 million dollars, which, you know, on a percentage basis, in all of these funds, not general fund, we were always below the 10% cap on the general fund, but we had other fund balances that we were utilizing. And, yeah, I think you characterized the situation accurately.
Mr. Doran?
Hey, for fund balance, we have the state calculation, the borough calculation, I'm curious about our district calculation. Is there any difference there? Which one would our, would fall?
Yeah, I would, I would, I would propose that the 11.2 million state calculation, that's the number to hang on to. That's, that's.
That's how we calculate.
Yes, yep, that's, that's how, as we're, as we're doing business on a daily basis, the number that we're looking at of what we have is the state calculation, not necessarily the borough calculation.
And follow-up?
Can I, can I respond to that point, though, to you, Mr. Doran? I think what's important to point out is that is the audited figure, but as Mr. DeGraw said, that might not be actuals as of today or at the end of the school year, which could be several million dollars less than the 11.2 million because of the decline in enrollment and the transportation costs that we have that will exceed the subsidy we get from the state.
Your follow-up?
That was a part of my follow-up. What is our current, we're now over halfway through the fiscal year in terms of looking at the budget, so what our current fund balances and projected at the end of, because it could be above or it could be below, which is, you're indicating below, it is anticipated at this point. And my related question to that is, in this budget, was fund balance counted in to any of the revenue stream? So, we have, whatever is in fund balance is available, all the.
Correct.
Concerns around it.
Whatever the number is, we have it, yes.
And can be used.
To your point, yes.
Really?
Yeah. And we typically, on an annual basis, begin kind of the mid-latter part of March to internally do what you were describing, Mr. Doran. Track, hey, how are things panning out expenditure-wise, you know, budgeted versus actuals? And this year will be no different, we'll be doing those exercises and tracking. And I would say by the latter part, right around the time that we're looking to approve the recommended budget, we can have information on what we, better than what we have now, on what we anticipate fund balance doing by the end of the year. Okay, all right. So, a little bit on the timeline, looking at the budget process, this is kind of looking back at the past three, four, five months. Won't spend really any time on that, but just looking forward, we're presenting the budget to the Board of Education in February. Typically, it's early February, this year was a little bit different with school consolidation, so we're mid-February. February and March, the board basically works that proposed budget, takes feedback and input from stakeholders, has regular board meeting testimony, has obviously work sessions, and is able to do its work to come up with the second iteration of the budget, which is the recommended budget. The board will typically finalize that recommended budget in the third week of March. Our deadline to the borough is to have that finalized recommended budget then by April 1st. So, typically, we try to have the board done by, you know, 24th, 25th of March at the latest. So, and we'll have meetings scheduled to finalize that work in the third week of March. Then in the months of April and May, the borough works the local contribution into their budget. A main focal point of your guys' work is establishing a local contribution ask of the borough. So, they receive that ask, work it into their budget, and then finalize their budget by typically sometime around, between the 10th and 15th of May is when they finish up their work, and we have a couple of meetings where we go over and present their, in their budget process. And then, after they've finalized local contribution, if it's exactly what we request, oftentimes, there's not much more work that needs to be done on our end, but if it's different, if it's more or less, and we've had both, I've experienced both, more and less, then the board would have additional budget meetings to come up with its final approved budget, which is that third version. And typically, we try to have that done by the first part of June. However, in the last few years, the state has kind of drug its feet on finalizing state revenue. And so, that has oftentimes, in the last couple of years, stretched out into mid and late June, actually. So, hopefully, they're doing a lot of work right now, it feels like trying to get things done early in the session, and so if that plays out, we, hopefully, we can be done by the first part of June. So, that is the process. The goal of this proposed budget is to provide as best, highest-quality education that we can in a declining revenue environment. That's obviously the big challenge, but we're, that's the main focal point of our work from an administrative perspective. There's several assumptions that we need to make in order to establish things on the revenue side. One, the first is a base student allocation, we've assumed a 59-60 base student allocation. That's what the governor has in his budget, and so that's what we're going with at this point. There's obviously ongoing negotiations and talks surrounding that number. We're also, it's important to note, we're also assuming the equivalent of a 680 BSA increase. We're including that revenue in our estimates, that's very important to note. We, the decrease in enrollment that I referenced earlier, 179 students, so that's the 11,626 compared to the current year, 11,805. And then the last assumption that we've made is a $2 million increase in the local contribution. So, that would be going from 58 million current year up to 60 million for FY26. So, those are the three main assumptions that we've made. And we'll go into this a little bit later in a subsequent slide, but just want to make a point, the point of building in certainty and high levels of likelihood into revenue estimates. That's one of the first things that can get districts into trouble, is kind of forcing the issue and getting close to the ledge, so to speak, figuratively speaking. But we want to make sure that we have conservative, very likely revenue estimates into our assumptions.
Ms. Julian?
Thank you, I appreciate you building in that certainty and having a kind of fiscally conservative approach to this. However, when I look at our budget workbook, and on page nine of that workbook, it says, you know, nonetheless, any potential increase in funding, whether one-time or permanent, will not be known until April at the earliest, and therefore cannot be considered for proposed in the proposed budget. We know that we have the governor's proposed budget, and of course, excuse me, down in June, we've had conversations that, you know, it would likely be at 680 in increase. Although that wasn't in the governor's budget, is this prudent of us to include this 680 BSA increase?
Yeah, so certainly, this goes straight to the likelihood word. And so, we're, we're, is it 100% certainty that we're gonna get that 680 equivalent? No, it's not 100% certainty, what we're doing is making the assumption that the education will not be cut. And so, yeah, is it fair for somebody to say, well, it's not 100% certain, yeah, it's a fair statement? We are taking the, the, what's the word, the calculated risk of making the assumption that education won't be cut from FY25 levels, and that's.
Dr. Minert?
And one of the things we talked a lot about as a board last year was our fund balance being an insurance policy of sorts for a scenario where that 680 doesn't come through. And so, I think that's really important for the board to consider as we're working through this, that, you know, if the board did want to go in the direction of utilizing fund balance, not overallocating the fund balance, and then in a situation where the 680 doesn't come in, you're not left with additional revenue to fill that hole. And so, we would certainly have fund balance to provide an insurance policy of sorts if that 680 didn't come in.
Do you have a follow-up, Ms. Julian?
I do, so just to, so that we understand what the whole number is. So, that 680 increase, just that increase itself, is that, and I read this on page nine of the book, is that 16 million? Is that the number?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Dr. Minert described the second required component to make in an assumption, is that, and that's having a Plan B. So, if the likelihood's not 100%, you want the likelihood to be very, very, very high, and then you also have Plan B in place. So, what happens in this, in the unlikely event that this doesn't come through? Let's say we only get a 500 equivalent BSA increase, we don't get the full 680, so we're, technically, we're cut from FY25. What's the backup plan, and that's what Dr. Minert described, so.
Mr. Doran?
I'll elaborate more on this later, but just an observation that I think is important. On page 10, the goal of the budget is to provide a high-quality education in a declining revenue environment. And I would just put on the table, our goal is to provide high-quality education. You know, there is, what the extent of resources are there, whether it's revenue, whether it's, you know, finances, whether it's staff, whether it's facilities, those resources that are available to us, whatever our goal is to keep, our whole goal is to keep cutting back. We get to the main school out here in Fairbanks, one building eventually. What our goal is really, should be focused on that education to the greatest extent possible. And I'll elaborate on those a little bit more, you know, we talked about Plan A, B, I have D, I have D, E, and F that we need to be looking at, that's keeping that focus on high-quality education. What is the context for our budget? We don't have its strategic plan overall for this budget, we have one for the current one. But how do we bridge those pieces to make sure we're focused on quality education, given the resources that we have? Just slight difference, but I think an important one.
Ms. Hardy?
Just first want to say, I appreciate that you're including that 680. I think it's a reasonable risk to take, but also pointing out for us in the public that if our insurance policy is 11.2 million, our insurance policy is not big enough.
Ms. Julian?
Thank you, the decrease in enrollment of 179 students, I don't think that that is conservative. is conservative. This year, we had a decrease of enrollment of over six, I'm sorry, 647 this year. And perhaps, perhaps, I know that those are, that's based on averages and data, but I mean, last year, our projection was far less, this year, we've closed three school buildings, we are looking at potentially making other cuts, and I just don't want us to be in a situation where that number is closer to what it was this year for our decreased enrollment, and then have to cut into our fund balance. So I don't necessarily know how we could increase that projection to say maybe it's closer to what we had this year, and what would that do to the overall budget?
I have two questions right off of what Ms. Julian said, that might offer more information or might not. For the 2025 number, I'm in the wrong slide, of 11,805, is that our current enrollment today, or has that number increased since this count was taken?
Go ahead. Yeah, it's actually decreased.
It's continued to decrease. And do we know, do either of you have an estimate of what number of those students, the loss that we saw were students that previously were doing dual enrollment in best?
I can't personally speak to the specifics of the decline, it's about 60 students.
Just to consider as we evaluate what Ms. Julian was saying about what we can actually anticipate for next year.
So, if I could respond to Ms. Julian's comments and question, the initial kind of questioning the projection, I would, I would say, the projection we've made, 11,626 compared to the 11,805, is, I would say the 600-student decline was abnormal, it was an anomaly. If we're looking back historically, the district is, aside from COVID decline directly related to school closure, we've, the district, in my look backs of 20, 30 years, had never experienced that size of a decline, so I would say the 11,626 is in line with more historical numbers. If you look at the FY '24 decline, you know, that's about 100, a similar decline to what we projected in FY '26. I would also go back to comments responding to Ms. Hardy's question, you know, if you look at the 600 and some odd student decline, and you consider the roughly 400 correspondence student decline, you know, then the decline becomes more in line with, I would say, no decline is normal, but, you know, a 250, 300-student decline, it's much more reasonable. So, really, we're looking at historical data, we work with Dr. Ott, he does an initial calculation, and then I, with, along with him, come up with the final numbers, so. And the last part of your statement, I want to make sure I understand, I think I might have misunderstood, Ms. Julian, I, you were talking about increasing our, I apologize, I might have lost.
I was thinking, increasing the amount of potential, I'm sorry, I'm not on the right page here, the decrease in enrollment, so increasing it from 179 students to potentially, you know, a larger number, and then looking-
Increasing the decline.
Increasing the decline.
Gotcha, okay, I didn't misunderstand it, okay, thank you for that clarification. Yeah, certainly, it's a balance, right? And so that's, so my comment is quite relevant, and we're looking at historical numbers and fluctuations, obviously, that's been mainly declines, and so I, obviously, you know, I can't say with a high degree of confidence that, you know, it's going to be 11,600 and some odd students next year, I hope it's more than that, but I would say that that number is based on data and trends that we're looking at for the Borough, and again, are they going to be accurate? They haven't been, they haven't been accurate the last few years, but it's the best, the best system that we have. And I will say, it's definitely a flaw in the state's, the foundation formula and how we count students, it's definitely a flaw, so.
Continue.
All right. Assumptions, all right, so we'll look at FY '26 revenue projections, so this is an illustration of all funds, so we have the operating fund, transportation and nutrition services, those first three funds are the only budgeted, what we call budgeted funds, that the Board approves. The rest are considered non-budgeted funds, but we estimate revenues and expenditures in those other funds as well. So obviously, 85% of that being the general fund, total of all funds, a decline of $6.8 million, and a total of, just shy of $228 million of all funds. Specifically looking at our general fund revenues, a $5.7 million decline at $192.3 million, and the different percentages for state, local, and federal revenue there. In my time, the trend has been the state revenue declining as a percentage, as well as federal decline in that local, the orange increasing, when I first got here, it was about 25%, so it's a significant increase in the proportion of our revenue being local.
Mr. Doran?
And again, this is one that can be carried to the truth, but when we look at our general revenue funds, to what extent we're looking at new possibilities as opposed to our traditional, these are the things, and I'm thinking particularly some of the conversations that have happened around this table about federal impact aid and readings of that law in its completeness, and if that opens up avenues for additional federal stream of funding, recognizing that the whole federal financial thing is completely up in the air and chaotic at the moment, but just in terms of current law, are we tapping into impact aid, other state things, and things that may have seemed more effort than worth the dollars, but today, the dollars are worth more to, you know, to make sure we get every little pool that's there, and I know it's not completely in our hands, but it's an open area to say, what areas of revenue might we tap into, and we've heard enough testimony over the last, great ideas, putting on the table of saying, you know, are there ways that we can attract more students, or, you know, and I've got other specifics on ways we might do that, calculate that, but I'll save that as we go further.
Ms. Hardy?
So, slide 13, which run, how in this pie graph are you accounting for the change in like the RLC? Are we saying local revenue, even though the RLC went up, then that revenue went up, when really, that's a decrease in state funding, and it means we lose money? Like, how is that fleshed out?
Yeah, that would be borne out in the 62%, slowly but surely over time declining, so when I first arrived at the district, that number was probably 66, 67%, and so that would, that would be borne out in that state percentage dropping, little by little over time.
Follow-up?
The 32%, just to finish the thought, is, wouldn't be tracking the RLC, it'd be tracking the total $60 million contribution plus, a little bit extra.
The total local contribution?
Yes.
But that then isn't actually a net increase in contribution, sometimes it turns out to be a wash and actually less money.
Right.
Even though we did give more money, it doesn't actually equate to more money to this district.
Yes, exactly what it would do is it would shift those percentages, as I referenced earlier, that the local percentage is going up and the state's going down.
Yeah, I just, for everybody here realizing that just because a number and a percentage change, doesn't mean we get more money to spend, oftentimes, it actually means we get less, and the state receives more of our funding to offset their obligation to education around the state.
And that would be this slide right here, that's what Ms. Hardy's describing, kind of that 2019, 2020 to 2000, well, really, the whole chart. I would say, starting in 2016, 2017 is when it really kind of, you know, the whole chart.
Mr. Doran?
Relative to Ms. Hardy's question, I do not know if I'm accurate, so I'm going to put it on the table and ask that if you looked at, but I understand in some Borough conversations that if, for instance, the local contribution went up to 60 million, that we would actually also get extra money from the state that would not be cut, so my understanding and the reading of, that some reading of law that might have been going on by various parties in the Borough and such, that if they increased our local contribution, not our minimum, not what's required, but what we additionally as a Borough give, that it actually means that we get more, or, I'm not sure that it's more money from the state or it's less that is subtracted, and if that's the case, we should know that and be able to put that on the table as a possible addition in the revenue stream.
Yeah, yeah, so you're correct, Mr. Doran, so the higher the local contribution, the lower the percentage of federal impact aid that's deducted from our state aid, so that is correct, what you, yep, what you're describing.
Well, so if, let's say we get 60 million, it might be we get, we can count on additional 300,000 or whatever it would be.
Yeah, and I could, I could come up with more precise numbers, but in essence, it reduces the percentage of impact aid that's subtracted out, so yes, we could attach that percentage and get a number, I wouldn't be able to give any kind of estimate, but, but yes.
And I won't belabor it now, but I would love to see, because that may give us more money that we can put to the benefit of kids.
Ms. Hardy?
I actually have a worksheet that has all of that information, including the data, and I was the one that told the Borough about that, so if we went off of last year's data for impact aid, and had they given us, so Fairbanks actual, they contributed, impact aid left after, whole thing, passed on to the district, we got $6,133,000-ish, $6 million-plus dollars passed on to us. If they had contributed an additional $3 million last year, we would have gotten $6,619,000, and it works out, and it changes because it's not a linear graph, the closer we get to the cap, the more it changes, it has bigger impact earlier on, so that first million, we got 167,000 more dollars, the second million, we got 162,000 more dollars, the third million, we got 156,000 more dollars. Had they gone to the cap, that final little bit would have only been 92,000, but in total, had they gone to the cap, instead of us being able to keep $6,100,000 impact aid dollars, we would have been able to keep $8,345,000, and, you know, there's dollars, but, yeah, it's a thing, we haven't paid attention, I've got something I've been working on, and thanks to also community members who have helped edit it, so that it isn't this thing that only makes sense to my brain, I'm hoping to publish it, but the change in 2017, we were, it was only 52% of our impact aid was allowed to be looked at, and then the state could take 90% of that 52, so it's a percent of percent, and people hate percents, but that's what it is. By 2023, because we were only giving $20 million above our RLC, the RLC had grown, but we were only giving 20 million above, that percentage increased to them being able to look at 62% of our impact aid. So we lost out on considerable amounts of impact aid because our total local contribution compared to the required local contribution, that's the fraction, shrunk, so they were able to keep more.
Back to you, Mr. DeGraw?
Ms. Julian?
Just joking, Ms. Julian.
Okay, thank you for that, I'd like to know what the proposal is then?
I can-
What, like, what's the ask? Is it that we receive less local contribution?
The more they give us, the more impact aid we keep.
Okay.
That is the, like, the short and sweet, the more they give us, closer to the cap, the more impact aid we get to keep. It has a bigger bang closer to the beginning because the graph changes, but that's the takeaway.
So then, what's the implications for this, though?
If they were to give us more than 2 million above, and the problem is, here's the other thing, there's all these pieces that change, so our RLC once again grew, they, state has assessed that we have more money, I actually have their projected in one of my other spreadsheets, but it went up by a little over a million, right? Or, I don't know.
The RLC, yeah, went up 1.2, 1.3.
Yeah, so right there, that extra 2 million, you can take, you can take a million right off the top, it doesn't matter, that's just making up for what the state's taking from our lunch money. Like, they're taking that off of that, so now we've got an extra million, so really, that increase is only a million dollars above. And then, impact aid changes too, sometimes impact aid is 14 million, sometimes impact aid is 4 million, and we don't know what that is, the federal government tells us what that is.
So I'm asking, what is the implications of the, what we can control? So if we're talking about a $2 million increase for the RLC, and the projection from the state, what we just talked about right here, what is the course of action for this Board to take, other than advocacy?
Yeah, and that's what it is, it's the higher the local contribution is, the higher percentage of impact aid that we get to keep, so it's like a win-win. When the local goes up, federal goes, well, it's state.
And so, and I'm understanding that's been calculated in here?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so it's all calculated in here?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy, for sharing those details.
And it's just the awareness, I think, is it's, it kind of adds some oomph to the ask, when we ask of the Borough for a local contribution increase, it's a win-win, where, you know, as we get more dollars locally, we're going to get more dollars at the state level as well.
Follow-up?
And then, for the record, what is the max RLC that they could give?
It's about 71 million and change, somewhere in that range.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so moving to specifically looking at the different revenue pools that we have, so local revenue, 98% of that is the local contribution, 2% of other local sources being, the main one, building rentals, and we get some local rebates on our P-card program, purchase card program, as well as some utility rebates that we get on an annual basis. So a total of six, just under 61 million there, $2 million increase from FY '25. On the state revenue side, the majority of that is our foundation funding, a little over $119 million, total decrease of about 7 million due to that enrollment decline, and then the other areas of state revenue are Ters and Pers, on-behalf payments, which those really don't have an impact, that's an in-and-out payment that we receive to buoy up the pension program, and then the 2% there, the biggest item there is our on-base school funding payment, we get about $1.4 million to run our base schools.
Ms. Hardy?
It's just more for informational, so that I know, do charter schools pay their Ters and Pers employment, or payments out of their general fund, or is that also the state, and then it goes to those employees?
Specifically, the on-behalf?
Yeah.
No, they don't pay that out, that's, that includes charter employees, that payment that we receive from the state for the on-behalf.
Thank you.
And then the last bucket, our federal revenue, the vast majority of that's our impact aid, and then the other is some Medicaid reimbursements that we receive mainly through our special ed program, it's a little over $12 million, about a $600,000 decrease from FY '25. And hopefully, we're seeing a bottom of the decline there, although, you know, as we continue to lose students, the impact aid dollars are tied to our student enrollment, so, you know, hopefully, if we can see our student enrollment plateau out, then we'll kind of see an end of those declines on the federal side.
Ms. Hardy?
Hardy, once again, just because I don't know this piece, and maybe others don't as well, so the impact aid, we get that, impact aid the state considers, that's the eligible impact aid, but there's other impact aid, how is that different, how does, because that's a much bigger number than-
The biggest, by far the biggest number, 95, 97% of it is passed through the state, it's a small amount that comes straight to us, and so that, those dollars aren't considered, aren't in the bucket that is subtracted from our state funding, but it's a small number, I can, I can get the number for tomorrow and let you know what-
Follow-up?
Yeah.
So then, that's just the part that isn't eligible, which is like disability- So then that's just the part that isn't eligible, which is like disability?
Yeah, disability, it might be construction. Like, there's a capital facilities portion as well. So yeah, the disabled, disability portion and, and the, the construction portion, yep. All right, so looking at, looking at our expend, on the expenditure side of things, this is a breakdown of our expenditures by function, so the different categories. Functions an accounting term, basically segregating our expenditures by expenditure type, so to speak. So general instructions, special ed, student support services being some of the bigger ones. Facilities is a big one as well, yeah, down there, operations and maintenance, 12%. So that's kind of how our expenditures are broken out by, by function, by accounting function. And then also, this should say by category. So this is expenditures by category. Salaries, wages, and benefits being the largest portion of that. Historically, it's been 86, 87, 88%. It's actually declined down to a little under 84%. And the main reason for that is our contracted custodial services for the upcoming year. So important to note, though, to that point, the gray contracted services section, that's, I would say, 95-plus percent people. So it's, it's contracts, a lot of them are special ed contracts where we're contracting out services from, from people. So we might have a hard time, for example, filling speech pathologist positions, and so we contract those services out. So while it's not salaries and benefits, the gray 11% section, contracted services, that's heavy in, in personnel and human capital.
Ms. Julian, and then Mr. Doran.
Thank you, and I was going to do this on my own, but perhaps it might be helpful to update this on, for everybody. For the general fund expenditures by function, what I was hoping to do is look at fiscal year '24 versus fiscal year '25 versus proposals for fiscal year '26 to see any variances in those percentages, especially when it comes to instruction, special education, support services, when it's, when it's by that function versus, and that would be the slide number 17. And so I don't know if we can, not necessarily for tomorrow, but it would be helpful to see how things are growing or shrinking.
Yeah, we can do that. Yeah, so look at maybe two or three-year, three-year look back at slide 17 and how those percentages have changed. Okay. And so then, yeah, by category, just to wrap that up, yeah, just, just shy of 84% salaries and benefits.
And Mr. Doran?
Contracted services and the custodial, as mentioned. We had a rough estimate last fall. From what I can see, it seems to be the same in this. Are we any closer to getting a real estimate?
Yeah, we are working on that as we speak now. A big part of that was establishing a footprint, and certainly, we needed to wait until the school consolidation process played itself out. So yeah, we, we should be getting pretty close to getting a, we'll be able to plug an actual number in there for the recommended budget.
Okay. Timeline on that, are we talking about April? Are we talking about over the next couple of weeks?
Hopefully, hopefully by, I would say, yeah, the first or second week of March. That's my hope. All right, so specifically looking at investments and reductions in the proposed budget. We'll break this out by elementary school, secondary school, and then district-wide. So in this proposed budget, we are proposing an increase to the PTR at our elementary grades of 2.5 students per class. That's going in grades K through 5 from 25 to 27.5. Specifically on the investment and reduction arena, we're looking at a reduction of 18 FTE classroom teachers, directly attributable to that PTR increase. And then, as we've worked through previously, the closure of Two Rivers, Midnight Sun, and Pearl Creek Elementarys, and then the downsizing of Salta Elementary.
Ms. Hardy, did you have a question on elementary?
And then in our secondary schools, the same 2.5 student increase in grades 6 through 8, as well as grades 9 through 12 in our middle schools from 28 to 30.5, and then at the high school level from 31 to 33.5. And then on investments and reductions here in secondary, we're adding two swim aids, one at North Pole Middle and one at Ryan Middle. Those were reductions that we saw previously, and there's reinstating those, those aid positions. And then on the reduction side, 15 FTE classroom teachers attributable to the PTR increase, and then a 1 FTE decrease at our CEC program, and then a 2.5 FTE decrease in counselors at Lathrop West Valley, and the .5 is from North Pole High. And then the reduction of the Star of the North Building lease out in the North Pole area.
Ms. Julian, and then Ms. Hardy, and then I'm going to put myself in the queue.
For slide number 23, fiscal year '25 secondary schools, investments, two FTEs, swim aids, North Pole Middle and Ryan Middle. Is that prudent right now, considering that on the other side we're reducing, you know, over 15, 16, 17, 18.5 educators?
Equating two FTE swim aids to the same amount of increase, you know, of teachers or decrease in teachers is not quite the same. So I think it's about $100,000 increase. We've heard from the community that it's a valuable program, both in North Pole and here in town. Last year, when it was reduced, part of the reason it was reduced was because of construction out at the North Pole Middle Pool. And now that that's, the construction's been completed, that's available for us. Other discussions that have also happened since I've become the superintendent, we've had conversations with the borough in terms of the borough not charging our students fees to use the pool, which was an expenditure in the past for the district. And so with the current, current administration and Mayor Hopkins, he's very supportive of waiving those fees for the district or working out some kind of arrangement so we don't have those expenditures on our side. So with the borough's support of that and our contribution of the swim aids, we feel like it's a very valuable program for our students and something that the community has asked for.
Yeah, follow-up, how many students will that serve?
You know, probably eight, 6 to 800 on a yearly basis. But, you know, it's hard to calculate because we do have elementary schools that do field trips from time to time over to those facilities as well.
And, and just if I may, if I may, to that point, just to build on that, you know, Mr. Doran said, our job's to provide as high-quality education, period, right? Well, I mean, the, the, despite declining revenue, just pointing out the challenges that we face. And so to Dr. Minor's point, I think it's, it's a high-impact move at a relatively low cost. So a little more than $100,000 cost there, and, you know, impacting hundreds of students. I think that goes to the administration proposing an enhancement of the educational offerings that we can provide to students. And, and, you know, again, building off of, you know, a partnership with the borough where we can eliminate fees and all that is high-impact for relatively low dollar investment.
Ms. Hardy?
Statement just on that, and then I do have a question. I was the one who proposed removing it last year from our budget, and it was like $50,000 in fees just for Westcott alone because Ryan, at that time, did not, we'd cut that program a while ago. So thank you for putting it back in. I definitely support it. It's a low-cost, big payout thing. And I also really appreciate that you add parity because there is another middle school that has a pool next to it. So having Fairbanks in-town families have that option is also really valuable. My question is, with the reduction to the CEC, 1 FTE, does that correspond with a drop in enrollment? Or is that just a straight reduction for budgetary?
A little bit of both. You know, I think historically, there has been a drop in enrollment, but it's hard to quantify because they do pick up enrollments with intercession and intra-session. But in talking with their new administration, Ms. Gilliam has worked with them. They think it's doable to sustain the cut there. Not saying that that won't impact educational services because any of these cuts do change the level of service we provide, but they feel like it's a feasible model going forward.
Do you have a follow-up?
I just want to say, I really appreciate that you did the forethought work to communicate with CEC before that came in. That is so appreciated.
I am next in the queue, and my question was actually the same as Ms. Hardy's, but I was curious, how many, how many employees are left at CEC after that cut? Okay.
And, and I'm going to, Ms. Nielsen has joined us tonight. I'm going to have Ms. Nielsen go through into the budget in the meantime and get an exact number, just so we make sure.
Can you use your mic? Thank you. Last year, we had a total of 4.5. That's one head teacher and 3.5 teachers. And then this year, we have a total of 3.5 with the head teacher and 2.5 classroom teachers.
And I heard that there's an addition of a sped.
The additional is a .5 rounds out that 1 FTE in special education.
And that's in a separate section of the budget. So we had additional .5 sped.
And then next is Mr. Burgess.
Sure, I just wanted to, to speak in support of adding the, the swim aids back in. And one of the things that I saw when I went out to North Pole Middle School last year was, I just happened to be there at the time that a sped class was using the pools. And the principal talked me through how important and it can be for those students in particular. So I, you know, I think there's lots of good reasons for that investment, and I do think we're getting a lot of bang for the buck there.
Mr. Doran?
Okay, since we're paused on this slide, I'll bridge previous ones, this one, and the next one. In terms of the, the swim piece, I am thrilled to hear that the borough is at least considering, or hopefully, they will come through the waiver of the fees because that, the increase of cost is much less. And I had looked for it in the budget. So are those fees currently in the budget?
They are, they are not in the budget, no.
Okay, so that's something if the borough, since we don't know if the borough's going to waive it, and whatever their process is, whether the mayor can do that or whether it has to go through the assembly, we need to either possibly be looking at adding in 50 to 100,000 for borough fees.
We've received communication from the mayor's office that there would be a waiver of fees, that we don't need the budget for that. And so, you know, I haven't dug into what their processes on their side are to make that happen, but we've received reassurances from the mayor's chief of staff that that would happen for next school year if we made the investment, investment on our side of the swim aids.
Okay, and related to this is the swim, their aids, does that mean a teacher needs to be there? Or are they able, so they will still figure North Pole will have a teacher, but they'll have somebody else helping out? Maybe lifeguard or whatever, I mean, or...
Yeah, that's correct.
And I think it's important, it's great to see Ryan possibly in that mix. I know Ryan was discontinued because there was no one to teach it. And so different circumstance than North Pole. My last piece on this, bridging all of these, and I sent the request earlier this morning, so you may have it ready, that you would give us the dollar figures that go along with each of these. We have them for the district-wide, which are next slide, but we don't have them for the other. So when we take 16 million that we're reducing, like, a clean breakout for how we're getting?
Yep, we have that this evening.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Julian, and then Ms. Hardy?
Thank you, I was looking at the counselor line item for reductions of 2.5 FTE counselors at Lathrop, North Pole High, and West Valley. So right now, Lathrop, I have, you know, from current enrollment is 782. At Lathrop, 688 at North Pole High, and 778 at West Valley. If we're reducing the total in the amount of counselors by 2.5, how many FTE equivalents do we have left?
That would leave three counselors at each of those schools.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hardy, and then Mr. Burgess?
Mine was just, since we're funded per how much the local contribution, all that, is there a way to capture that roughly $100,000 that we're not going to pay to the borough in a way that the state would put it in its fraction? When we're doing the math?
Yes.
But can we make sure we at least get something?
So each year, the, the borough puts together kind of a, you know, on the, you know, providing services on behalf, and, and that certainly could be added and would be, should be added. Because, so building on the point of increased local contribution, that's something we caught four or five years ago was we, we weren't including that on behalf amount. So we share a risk office with, we share some legal, there's things that the borough provides on behalf, services to the district. And in that, including that increases that local contribution and decreases the amount of impact aid that's taken away. So yes, we'll, we'll make sure that those, yeah, that could be a significant number.
Mr. Burgess?
Hitting back on the reduction of counselors. So three per building would be what's remaining. How much would each counselor's caseload increase, roughly? I know that's dependent on enrollment, but...
I didn't just do that math of what it would increase on average. I, if I did the math correctly, it would be about 253 students on average, just looking at West Valley and Lathrop. Thinking back in my experience in the district, if it's okay to share, the last time we cut or reduced our counselor allocation, I think, was in 2016. And at that point in time, it increased the caseload from approximately 191 on average to 240. So this would be aligning, based on the enrollment decreases that we've seen kind of aligning back to that same PTR.
Thank you.
Mr. DeGraw?
Moving to the district-wide category. So on the investment side, we see a transportation subsidy from the general fund to the transportation fund of $2 million. And that's to address rising costs and decreasing state revenue in the transportation arena. We see an increase in the benefit rate. So while we've seen increased health insurance costs and claims, as well as property and casualties, not just health, but health is, is the lion's share of that risk category. Seen, definitely seen increased insurance costs. We've had incorporated increase in the benefit rate of approximately $1.6 million. And then we are investing $600,000 in educator laptops, and then an additional $300,000 compared to current year in curriculum materials. On the reduction side, we have contracted out our custodial services for approximate savings of $3 million. Charter revenue allocations decreased by $520,000. That's equivalent to half of the 680. So it's equivalent, they would be receiving the equivalent of a 340 BSA increase. Current year, they're receiving the full 680 amount, equivalent amount. And then lastly, a reduction of $500,000 in administrative reductions. And that's, that's three FTE plus some fractional amounts associated with certain staff members moving to grant funding.
Ms. Hardy?
I have two, but I'm happy to do one and then get back in the queue. With the transportation subsidy of 2 million, is that, the governor had his own bill that he proposed that included transportation... he proposed that include transportation increase? Would that still be necessary with that transportation increase?
Yeah, so good question. So his, he had a 20% increase in his proposal. That would equate out to just under $2 million for Fairbanks. So that full $2 million at current route counts, I would say could be reduced to around maybe through a million, 1.5 million. And then that would cover the full bill for 90 routes, which is where we're at right now. So in theory, yes, if that 20% holds up, we could see a decrease in the required amount in order to tread water, so to speak.
Follow up with that same. So what would happen hypothetically if we didn't subsidize transportation?
Yeah, so that's, that's another great question. And we've done this in the past. It would equate to, it would basically be akin to using fund balance. So, so we anticipate the fund balance in our transportation fund to hit zero, probably a little bit before the end of the year. We'd probably go slightly negative in our transportation fund. We can allow funds to go negative as the borough looks at just our total bottom line, but eventually we would have to, we would be forced to make transfers to shore up those accounts.
Follow up to that follow up, because what I was more getting at is what if we hypothetically don't subsidize transportation and also just provide what we're funded at?
Yeah, so that would be a drastic cut to our transportation services district wide.
Give like for the listening public some...
Yeah, like we would, we probably, at the current route levels that we're at are regular, so when we talk 90 routes that we're running, a significant portion of those are special ed routes, 30 to 40 routes are special ed routes and somewhere 50 to 60 regular ed routes. Really, it would be difficult at the number of regular routes that we're at to maintain regular routes. So I mean, it could really be a cliff effect of us needing to basically cancel regular transportation service for our district.
And important to note that special education transportation is required. And so I think what Mr. DeGraw is getting at is that we would pace, we would provide that baseline of service for our special education services, our students, but then would not provide any kind of transportation for the rest of our students.
So yeah, I think the, the good news is that transportation narrative is starting to get a lot of traction. If, I'll take delivery of saying, if the governor has proposed a 20% increase, so it's not enough, but I would love to see a 20%, governor propose a 20% increase to the BSA, right? So that's, that's the good news is it's obviously getting some traction, but it's not enough. So kind of a glass half full, glass half empty scenario. So, you know, we'll take the 20%, but it's still not enough.
Okay. Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, if that's okay. My first question is about curriculum materials. What is that specifically?
Yeah, so I'm not sure what the cycle, we run on a cycle where, you know, math one year, English the next, science the next. Those, for a little history, for especially new board members, a regular amount that we have budgeted annually is in the 900,000 to $1 million range. The last several, at least two years, we've cut that down to about 200, a little over $200,000. I know we've benefited from some grant funds to make some purchases, needed purchases. But this, this would increase the 200,000 up to the $500,000 range would be the budgeted amount for FY '26. I'm not sure if I...
And we can, we can get you the specifics of what's in the cycle for next year. We can provide that.
Okay. I was, I was curious if this was going to go back and kind of retroactively kind of pull what we've skipped and pull it forward, or if we're just going to move on and do what? Okay, well, to be continued.
It does a little bit of that, but I think what's important to note is that it doesn't get to the level that we once had in terms of spending on curriculum and providing updated materials. And so already with the 300 added back, we're still behind and we'll continue to lag behind.
Right, okay. My, my next question is, it's kind of a double question. The charter revenue allocations. On, I was looking at page 329 of the proposed budget. And on that page, the FY '25 budget is about 867,000 for, it says supplies. And it goes down to, hang on, am I on the wrong? I am on the wrong thing. Sorry. But that's another question too, is why the decrease? So the supplies went from 867 down to 55, and then it says supplemental charter revenue allocation, and it went down from a million to 519. So I was just curious, I don't understand, first of all, the categories, and then I'm curious why the huge decrease?
Yeah. So you're probably on a summary page for the charter section, Ms. Hubbard. And so it's showing cumulative dollar amounts for all charters. This is, this can kind of be a confusing part of our budget. There's really nothing that the district controls in the charter world. Revenue is set by statute and expenditures are directly controlled by the charters. So the expenditure, the supplies that you mentioned, the, for this proposed budget, the first version, the district makes some educated guesses. A lot of times we're pulling in numbers from the prior year. And then through the recommended and final approved budget, charters are giving us specific information telling us what, how they want their money to be spread. Hopefully that makes sense. But the expenditure side for the charters, they are directly controlling. It just might not be accurate at this early stage in the budget process. On the revenue side, that decrease from a million down to 500,000 is this decrease that we're showing here on slide number 24. So for FY '25, we, we allocated to the charters. We received a one-time funding of 680, equivalent to 680 BSA increase. We allocated 100% of what the charters would receive to the charters. Just for full disclosure, technically speaking, a district is not required to allocate one-time money to charters. Technically speaking, by statute, we're not required. However, and yeah, I know a lot of folks reached out to, head teachers and principals reached out to legislators, the intent is there, obviously, but technically, the district's not required. So what the, what the proposed budget is doing is it's saying the district will pass on half of the 680, not the full 680. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Unless it's in the BSA and we're not assuming it's within the BSA. And so that is something that I wanted to flag for board members, that I am very hopeful that the money go, the revenue from the state goes into the BSA rather than one-time funding, but will need to be aware of that come approved budget, that there may be a half a million dollars that the board will need to look at and potential reductions to balance the budget.
Ms. Julian? I have, back in the queue, Ms. Carol Hubbard? Did you have more? Okay, sorry, go ahead.
So I'm going to ask one question or one word. Why? Why are we not passing on that? Why, why is there that $500,000 reduction for charters then? And what do we, are we controlling that? Are we saying we're not going to give them the 100% that we gave last year?
That's correct. That's what's in my proposed budget. And so that would allocate out to other neighborhood schools or other programs that the district could use. It truly is also a call if we feel like charter schools are a very important part of our school district in the state of Alaska, then put the money in the BSA because a BSA increase helps all of our schools, including charter schools. And so I think it's important for our charter schools to realize how important that increase is within the BSA and not outside of it.
Okay, understood. Can I ask my real question then?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. The increase to the benefit rate, 1.6 million, talk to me a little bit about the benefit rates, how, it's my understanding that we went from a multi-year average to a one-year average for benefits. How much does that vary every single year? And here, it would be really helpful for me to see like a three-year, kind of like a three-year historical of like what's going on with our benefit rates and why is there 1.6 million dollars more that's needed this year?
Yeah, yeah. So our risk fund is a very large fund, lot of money going in and out there. Obviously, the big one, as I mentioned earlier, is health insurance. We're usually right around $30 million annual in health insurance claims. And then there's other, there's property casualty, general liability, E and O, et cetera, et cetera. So I would say in the 35 to 40 million dollars total annual revenue and expenditures going in and out of that fund. What we're, it's a non-budgeted fund, so the board doesn't approve revenue and expenditures. The revenue to that fund is the benefit rate. So it's a percentage of each dollar that we pay out in salaries. A percentage of that is also charged and then sent to the risk fund to pay our insurance liabilities. The, we can provide, we'll, we'll go back five or 10 years, I would say, to get a historical number on the benefit rate. And then what we're literally doing is we're projecting and anticipating revenue each year to that fund and then tracking expenditures. And that's one area where the, the best way to track the performance of the risk fund is to look at fund balance. So each year, you know, we can know if, if the, if the fund balance at the end of one year is 3 million bucks and all of a sudden, at the end of the next year, it's 8 million bucks, we ran a big surplus. If it drops big, we ran a big deficit. Does that make sense? That's the easy way to track it. And I'll have this tomorrow as well. I'll have fund balance by year for the risk fund. And that's, we're, you're literally seeing, did it run a surplus or a deficit each year? And so the last several years, we've trended anywhere from zero to 3 or 4 million dollars. This year, we saw a significant decline. We ran a significant deficit. It was probably just shy of $2 million a deficit. And so that's one area where we, the administration will make transfers to shore up that fund balance and to make sure that we're going to continue to pay out claims, health insurance claims, obviously are the big ones. But yeah, what we can do is I'll bring a history, history of the actual benefit rate and then I'll bring a look back of five or 10 years of the fund balance levels of that fund. And I don't want to say it's simple, but that's a, that's a simple, high-level way of, and we're, of tracking performance, whether it's a surplus or a deficit. And that's something the administration's tracking on a regular basis. Hopefully I answered your question.
Ms. Hardy, back to you.
Yep. Dr. Minert actually addressed the question when he talked about charters. But I do want to say, one, thank you for communicating with the charters prior to that being in your budget, and this wasn't a surprise. That is such a refreshing change. Very appreciated, and I've heard from my own charters principal that she really appreciated all of the work you do to be a good partner to our charters. Also, for historical context, my first year on the board, we got one-time funds and that board at the time voted to give a certain amount per child, and it was significantly less than even what half would have been. Under Dr. Minert's leadership, we gave them all of it and hoped for the best that we would start seeing funding within the BSA. And I, as a charter supporter and advocate, support this move. I think that if the state wants funding to go to our schools and our charter schools, that money should follow statutory obligations and it should be put in the BSA because the BSA is the one way to equitably fund all our schools. And I, I think this one-time funding is, is not the way to do it and it is not in statute and that's not our problem. So I very much support that. The, I guess, follow-up piece, since you answered that, is there's the administrative reduction of $500,000 up there. I'd like to see somewhere where it says, because I know like last year, I believe it was 600,000 we cut. And those cuts, I don't think are seen or noticed as much. Somewhere where you can capture what three to five years has been cut from the administrative downtown center. It's been a lot and it has been proportional, but because it's not an FTE in a classroom, it's easily lost. And that's one of our biggest criticisms is why aren't you cutting down here? We are, you just can't see it as easily.
Yeah, absolutely. So it has been a 20% cut to administrative positions over the last five years. We did a, as part of a work session last year, some information on administrative cuts and we're working on updating that for the board because we figured that would be a topic of conversation again. And so we're working on that for a future work session that will have some of that information.
Yeah, we might have it by tomorrow, but it might be better for a, a future work session.
To echo Ms. Hardy's request, if there, perhaps it's not going to be in a graphic anywhere, but in a presentation to us connecting those to how our neighborhood schools and charter schools feel those impacts, the direct, like the correlation there would be really helpful. I think we're back to you, Mr. DeGraw.
All right, thank you. Ms. Maple? All right, so this is a high-level breakdown district wide. This is, this might be one of the, yeah, this was an interesting slide. Interesting is a nice way to put it. So FY '25, 1474 total district-wide FTE. Important to note, this is general fund, this doesn't count grant funding. There's a couple hundred grant-funded positions district-wide probably, so that's significant, but this is just general fund. FY '26 down to 1306, so a drop of over 100, just shy of 168 FTE. And the two big items there would be the contracting out of custodial and then the closure of the, the three elementaries and the downsizing of the fourth.
Does that include the PTR reductions in addition to those other two?
Yeah, that was somewhere in the neighborhood of 33, 34, specifically to the PTR.
Ms. Hardy?
Just, we often hear that like with the PTR reductions, how much of that is actual, going to be less people employed by the district or how much do we think like people have retired and so jobs will fill and...
Yeah, the best we can say at this point is we feel that the lion's share of those can be absorbed by attrition. But certainly at this point, I don't think we can say that nobody will, will lose a job.
I think back to you, Mr. DeGraw.
All right. So here's the slide Mr. Doran was referring to, and this is kind of an itemized list of what we've come up with. So elementary school closures, it's the three that we have listed prior, plus the downsizing of, of Salja Elementary that equates to, out to approximately 5 million. These are all estimates, want to, I failed to put estimates and a bunch of asterisks on this slide, but just imagine a bunch of asterisks and estimate words on it. The contracting out of custodial at 3 million. The PTR increase, two and a half students per class, that's approximately 4.3 million. The admin reductions we just referenced, as well as the decreased charter allocations. The reduced counselors, 2.5 FTE at 315. And then the Star of the North lease reduction at 175 and the CEC position at 127. We also used $2 million, the increase from 58 to 60 million dollars in local contribution to balance the $16 million deficit. Actually ended up being a little more than $16 million. It's also important to note, especially for board, new board members, there's never any point in time where everything just stops. Things, numbers and figures and staff levels and FTEs are constantly changing, they never stop. I equate it to a foot, a photographer at the Olympics photographing the 100-meter dash. Like you see a picture in Sports Illustrated halfway down the, the track and the race didn't stop there, it kept going. But that's what you see. It's the same thing, a budget is a snapshot in time. And so very important to note that things are constantly changing. So yeah, the deficit ended up being a little more than 16 million. It wasn't 16.5, but it was in the 16.3 something range. So those, those numbers all add up to 15.9 million. One might say, well, it's not 16. The difference is made up in this, I'm taking a little bit of a risk here, getting into the weeds. We initially had the benefit rate increase at a higher level. We were able to reduce that amount with the significant reduction in FTEs. So when we first came up with our $16 million deficit, it incorporated a certain increase in the benefit rate tied to more like 1,450 FTE. That FTE dropped and so we were able to get additional savings from that. And that's, that's the difference between the 15.9 and the 16.2, 16.3 level.
Ms. Julian?
Thank you. I just keep going back to...
Thank you. I just keep going back to making sure that we have the most conservative projections when it comes to our estimated deficit. And enrollment decline, of course, is a huge multiplier for us. Last year, fiscal year '25, we had a 5% decline in enrollment in one year. That was the 647. I realize that that was an outlier. But this year, we're only projecting a 1.5% decrease in enrollment. And I think it would be more fiscally prudent for us as a, as a body to project a higher loss in enrollment, because we just closed the three schools, and we may also be increasing class sizes if we, if we, of course, accept the proposed budget as is, which may also further reduce enrollment. So I'd like to see a larger number, and then what that does overall to our budget.
Yeah, so I mean, we can, Ms. Julian, we can come up with, I can come up with an alternate scenario with a, with a larger decrease for the board. Ultimately, the number that we've put forward is administration's recommendation, but absolutely, the board can look at alternate scenarios, which I can't provide. And then that would just be part of the amendment process that the board would go through to come up with your recommended budget, and that's certainly something that the board could look at and entertain.
Yeah, I mean, even when I looked at, you know, kind of averages, if we're looking at just a 3% average, if we're looking at just recently from COVID, and again, we are always in unprecedented years since 2020. I feel like we're in our fifth unprecedented year. So even if we just increased that projection from 1.5% decrease to a 3% decrease in enrollment decline, I'd like to see what that does to our overall deficit, because if this body decides to use any fund balance to balance anything in this current budget, I want to also know what, what is kind of a worst-case scenario? If our enrollment is declining, what type of fund balance do we need to have that can potentially buffer that?
Yeah, absolutely. And then I would, I would propose to have that available for the board at our next work session, maybe. Would that be a reasonable timeline?
Mr. Doran, and then Ms. Hardy.
Going on the slide that's currently on the deal. Observation, you mentioned Salcha reduction. It would be good to get an idea of what that is. I know you spitball an estimate on the spot last week, and it was a reduction. It wasn't to a certain amount. And I, just as we get into our more detailed discussion in here as to what, what that might actually look at and could be a variable on.
Yeah, so I can speak to that in a little bit more detail than I did the other night at the, was that a work session or was that the regular meeting? Can't recall. The original savings tied to Salcha Elementary was $1 million, and under this new scenario, the savings have become 700,000. So there's $700,000 in savings in the reduced staffing model, which is $300,000 fewer savings than just closing the school outright.
But more than what was spitballed last week and a half ago, two weeks ago, just about.
That was for Two Rivers?
It was for Salcha. But either way, what I want is, a scenario was put out, a dollar figure was, whether that's the scenario that we wind up with, because there was no conversation what, and the motion was to reduce, there was no dollar figure to that.
Yes.
Just putting it out there, we'll get into details on that, I would suggest.
And the, the number that I just quoted is based on specific, it's based on a head teacher, it's based on two additional teachers, a custodian, an admin secretary, food service. It's a specific model, and certainly, the board, if in further conversations wants to adjust that, that would obviously change the savings number, certainly.
Okay, and if I might, I'm sorry, I don't want to get into this as a debate at the moment with you, but you just highlighted the point in the budget book, there is no head teacher. But you're saying that that is in the model. So I'm just saying, we need to look at what that model is that was not a set dollar amount for the discussion. For administrative reductions, it would be good to get, I know you, you need flexibility, and I think we really recognize this as a board last year, and it's important also this year to give the administration flexibility to figure out where to make those cuts. But what concerns me is the 500,000 includes shifts to grant, and this is always problematic with, they're not cuts, they're not a reduction. We're just pulling from a different pile of money. So I think what would be helpful to me perhaps, and if it is helpful to others, to know how much of that 500,000 is just going to grants, and so the administration is staying the same. But it is a challenge. There are going to be reductions, as we've done in schools, there will be reductions in administration.
Yeah, we can come up with that number. I would say it's a very small amount of that 500,000. I would also propose that the savings of the services of those positions is valuable to the district overall. One example is, we shifted three or four FTE safety assistants at the high school level over to a grant last year, and that protected those services for the school district and for students. So, but yeah, we can, we can provide that number.
Ms. Hardy?
So kind of following along with Mr. Doran, and these are more requests. So I think it would be good for us, not a whole work session, but part of a work session, to have one on Salcha and where a reduced staffing model looks like. And I would request that we invite at least Mr. Principal Hoy to the table when we have that discussion. And then following from Ms. Julian's point and adding to my own, could Balancing Act include a decrease in enrollment? So that would be a way for us to see what that would actually look like in there for different percents. And then also have us be able to change the transportation subsidy or zero it out.
Just to clarify the, could you repeat the enrollment part of your request?
So to Ms. Julian's point where she would like to make a more conservative, so instead of 179 students, maybe it's 300 students, allow us to do that with a corresponding. It creates more of a deficit. That would be a good way for board members to look at how things change, let the community see things, how they change. Yeah, I do have one other thing if I'm permitted.
And the transportation is baked in already.
I figured. Can we also, and this will lead to other discussions, have in Balancing Act something about how if more charter schools were to come next year, be baked into the Balancing Act so people can capture that?
Yeah, I can, I'm, I have on my list to do some estimates on charter scenarios.
Okay, next is Ms. Julian, and then Ms. Carol Hubbard.
Thank you. And to the transportation point, now this goes, I've been asking for very conservative estimates. However, I also want to go back to something that you said earlier, which is that it is, you know, reasonable risk, a calculated risk, calculated estimates here. So we know that the governor's budget proposes a 20% increase to transportation, which would reduce our amount that we would invest in transportation subsidy by 500,000. So instead of it being a $2 million investment, it would be a $1.5 million investment, if I'm tracking. I would recommend that we, that, I think that, in the same way that we are assuming a 680 BSA increase, I think that we could more accurately project a $1.5 million investment in transportation subsidy versus the 2 million, based on what we see coming forth from the, from the governor.
I guess I would counter that, and that the 680 is much more likely, because it has made it throughout the entire process, in terms of, we've already received that. And so oftentimes, you'll even hear legislators say this, that although it was one time, it sets the baseline of what school districts expect. Given that we haven't seen that large of an increase for transportation, I would be much less likely to recommend to the board that that's a safe assumption that we'll get. I think there's a long way to go in terms of the conversations at the legislative level to see what that final transportation number will be. Certainly, the board could do that in the end, but that would not be my recommendation to assume that for transportation.
Then I'll just follow up then to Ms. Hardy's recommendation for the budget tool. If it's able, if we're able to not just take transportation as a whole 2 million, but to kind of move it in increments on the tool, that would be helpful.
Yeah, we have it broken out in certain increments.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Carol Hubbard, and then Mr. Burgess.
Thank you. And on the transportation, I, I think we've got these numbers already from transportation, but I'm curious to know how many students ride the bus? How full are these buses? Do we know, like approximately? Do we have two kids on one huge bus? Do we have 52 kids on a huge bus? With 90 routes, I'm just curious at how well we're actually using this and how it's being.
Yes, so we can provide that information. I'll say that we can't provide exact amounts, because we don't have registered ridership in the district. But we can, we can get some, some estimates on ridership levels, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Burgess?
Thank you. I was looking at, on the revenue side, at the local contribution numbers. And while the mayor's budget is going to include that increase of $2 million compared to last year, what I've been hearing from the Borough Assembly is not necessarily making me optimistic about getting that $2 million. So I would like to see, you know, a local contribution of 58 million as flat as in the Balancing Act. But I would also like to be able to look at an increase above what the mayor is proposing, because I still, though I'm not necessarily optimistic, I still hold out hope that they, that the Assembly and the mayor can find a way to increase beyond that in order to really help us make it through the next couple of years. And I'm hoping that they understand the tie between a strong educational system and our local economy, and that that'll help sway their decision.
Yeah, to that point, we'll have several different levels on the local contribution.
Ms. Hardy?
To piggyback off Mr. Burgess's point, could we, when you have those increases to local contribution, also show how that would increase our impact aid, to make that very clear to the public and the borough that we're getting, you know, more bang for our buck? I know we don't know the exact impact aid, so it's going to be an estimate.
I, we can certainly, more easily provide that information to the board publicly. I'm not, I'm trying to think how we would incorporate that into Balancing Act. But yeah, we could definitely communicate out at the different levels what that would mean, impact aid-wise, certainly.
Or could we just bake, because it's around 100,000, depending on what it is, into that an increase of local contribution is actually a million, 100,000, and say that that is due to impact?
Yeah, we could go, we could go a $2 million increase and really show 2.1 or 2.1, you know, whatever it is, and that would represent, and then the information part, say, represents a $2 million increase. So yeah, we could, we could do something to that effect, yes.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Thank you. I have a kind of a strange question. I was just thinking about actually Two Rivers and Salcha. So if we have students that are in Two Rivers who decide they want to go to Weller, and there's three of them, we would send a bus out there to pick them up, is that correct? And take them to Weller every single day?
Yes, we would provide transportation for those students.
Okay, and are we then, are we doing the same for Salcha? Are we still, are we offering any transportation for those students to Anderson Crawford on base if they wanted to attend that school instead of doing the reduced model?
Not in that scenario, no.
So they would still be able to have bus service from home to Salcha Elementary for that reduced program?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think terminology is important, and this may be diving into the weeds and philosophy, but as we talk about Salcha in general, I don't want to assume that it's a lesser model, right? It may be a different model, but there's certainly a way to deliver similar services that they've expected, just in a different format. And so I think it's really important as we work through this that we don't label it as a lesser model, because one of the things we've heard from Salcha and Two Rivers is that the community wanted to step up and support the schools. And so I think that there are a lot of partnership opportunities for Salcha that can offset some of the FTE that we had in the school to provide similar services.
I'm going to put myself in the queue, and then Ms. Julian, and then Mr. Doran. Jumping ahead a slide, never mind, I'm going to go to Ms. Julian and then Mr. Doran.
Thank you. I just want to refer back to the Budget Committee and the memo that was put forth by the Budget Committee on December 3 to this board. And in that budget report, in that memo, it states that this board should avoid increasing PTR at all costs. I'm going to continue to state that through this process, but this budget that's been put forth to us assumes relatively, you know, high increase in PTR across the board in our class size targets. And the Budget Committee has stated very clearly that we should figure out how to put forth this budget without increasing PTR.
Mr. Doran?
I'm going to pause, because I know, sitting in your position of facilitating, you do want to, you want to be on the queue? You should go ahead.
It's about the next slide that we actually haven't gotten to yet.
Okay, no, that's okay.
Can I make one comment to Ms. Julian's? So our proposed budget did change slightly with the decisions that the board made around school consolidations. And so I think that's important to note, that there were less PTR increases prior to the decision of the board. Obviously, the board has, you know, we respect the board's role in those decisions. But the proposed budget prior to those decisions did have a lesser PTR increase. And so as we work through this, and as the board starts to work their recommended budget, you'll see kind of the give and take in terms of the different decisions you make. On one end will impact the other end. And so just wanted to note that any of these cuts that are proposed in the proposed budget are felt and are painful, and we know that they're going to be impactful for our students and staff. But it did look very different a couple of weeks ago prior to the board's decision.
Mr. Doran?
Go ahead with the next, my comments will still be germane and questions.
I was just looking, if you can go to the next one, yeah, the 4.3 million. Do you know, or could you share with us tomorrow, what BSA increase would allow us, assuming we made all the cuts in the proposed budget, did everything other than this, what the BSA would need to increase to?
For just the PTR increase or to balance the budget?
Just to not do the 4.3 million in PTR increase.
Yeah, I can bring that number tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay, back to Mr. Doran, and then Ms. Carol Hubbard, or was that your question?
Okay. A couple of thoughts catching up with conversation. Enrollment, I think we should have a broader conversation. we should have a broader conversation. This is best plan. We will, this proposed budget will change between now and the end of March. And knowing that, I did have the observation and that I understand from the military, we haven't had a lot of conversation on that. But we know that part of our drop was military connected students for this year's enrollment. But best information seems to be indicating that the military is limiting, if not discouraging, families from coming up here. And so that is an impact and such. On the transportation, what our, what our model of transportation is. And I think just in terms of, we may not have students register for the bus, but they know how many are on the bus. They have a count and they know how many students, and I believe they probably still use a counter, how many are on the bus. They know, they have a pretty, pretty accurate count of how many kids they pick up and they drop off. Our conversations, I want to end with a comment, but just to think, these one-page sheets were wonderful that were prepared for the Budget Committee and then distributed to all the board last fall with the Budget Committee recommendations. But from each department, what would be great is maybe to have an update based on the FY '26 proposed. That would be really good, and it saves presentation after presentation and better conversation. The last thing I want to say is, we've been talking about what I call Plan D. It might be the doomsday conversation. The, and it's relative to the question you just asked, Ms. Maple, that, you know, how much do we need? And there's a good dollar figure on the table at the moment, 1,000, and then increases subsequent. But unless we get more than we had last year, we're cutting. If we get anything less than what we had last year, we are going further down. And it's my comment about, are we creating a budget for declining revenue? Is it, are we using a retreat methodology or growth methodology? And if we continue to pare down, what are the essence, the core things that are most important to us? And what if we don't get what we got last year? What's our conversation around that? And, and actually talking to Dr. Minett a little bit earlier today, and I don't have the answer. I'm not intending to put an answer on, but thinking, and whether we wind up doing that wholly in this budget, we may not have time. We have to propose a budget. But we have to have it as part of it and promise that conversation. I am looking at, what is the absolute bare bones that we do that we can build from? So of class size, the classroom, that relationship between teacher and educator. And I'm just, this is not a plan. This is not the design. But as we think about that, whether it be transportation, we don't have the money. We can't run as many buses. Maybe we do a winter bus, you know, October 1 to April 15 or something. Is there, you know, looking outside the box, if we could not have all the enrichment offerings within a school, do we, that cover prep time, maybe we shorten the day by a half hour so the teachers get their prep time, but everyone is teaching in the classroom? Okay. I don't want to get deep into the weeds because I just want the idea out there that we need to be thinking beyond that. We have no assumptions from the state, either from the legislature or the governor. The governor has said he wants to see public money going to private and public schools. He has no money in there for neighborhood schools. The legislature is offering something that affects all schools. Okay. Is there enough to hold that line? We know there are things coming from the federal level that has also said exactly the same thing. We don't know yet how that's going to play out. But we need to be thinking down that line because as people said in testimony, who are we going to close next year? But what do we preserve? What are those core things to keep our neighborhood schools, to keep our various schools and offerings within our community, and then be able to build from that? So I'll stop.
I will say, next we have Mr. Burgess, then Ms. Carol Hubbard, then Ms. Julian. And then I'd like to be able to return to Mr. DeGraw for him to complete, to get through the last two slides. And I just want to remind everybody before we, as we get to that point, that we've made lots of requests so far for what we'd like to see. But that was, as we wrap up the slides, to keep in mind if there's things that you haven't yet asked for that you'd like to see at future sessions or see in, what's it called, Balancing Act, to make note of those so that we can get those in before we wrap up today. So, Mr. Burgess?
Thank you. So I wanted to say, I appreciate that you're working on adding the charter school options to Balancing Act. And on that note, noting the correspondence from the Two Rivers community and the principal out there, that they're interested in looking at the potential for a reduced model. I don't know if there's that potential there. Or homeschool and science lab hub. So if we could have those priced out in the budget as well as an alternative to turning the building over to the borough, that would be appreciated. And I also wanted to look a little bit at athletics as well. If we can get some athletics numbers in Balancing Act or discuss those costs for the district.
Yeah, I believe the activities, information that is currently in Balancing Act, a note on activities. Activity starts to get tricky in terms of cuts, especially at the high school level, because we're at a point now where we're just paying for contracts of coaches, officials, and some uniforms. So kind of a bare minimum in terms of activities. And so really, there isn't any more to cut out of activities unless as a board, we decide what specific activities we want to cut. So cutting a dollar amount is not helpful because essentially, we'll need, I mean, it could go one of two ways. If you say a dollar amount, then administration will have to go back and say, okay, these are the activities that we would propose that you cut, because it will truly be a cut to specific activities at the high school level. At the middle school level, it's slightly similar in nature, but less to cut there. And so overall, we spend about $245,000 for middle school activities, and I think about 1.1 for high school activities. So some funding there, but just realize that there's nothing left to cut other than cutting specific activities for students.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Thank you. I have two questions. My first question is, with the fund balance at 11.2, and that at our 6% low end target, basically, if we did everything, could we buy back and use 4.3 to buy back the teachers so that we don't increase PTR? That's my first question.
The question is, could we use fund balance to buy back the?
Yes.
Yes, the board has the prerogative to do whatever it chooses to. Administration would strongly urge the board to not do that.
Okay, that's, that was, okay. Can you explain why, just for the sake of, because I really don't know. I've never asked the question. And anybody listening that doesn't know, too.
Yeah, so the, the real danger in that is, think of fund balance as one-time revenue. So once you've spent it, it's done. You don't have that year after year. Your buying back of PTR buys you one year of PTR savings, but the next year, the board will be back in this very same spot, looking at needing to potentially cut that PTR. So it's possibly a reasonable strategy, depending on how much fund balance you would want to play with. But it would be our strong recommendation not to use fund balance for ongoing costs that the district has. And especially that large amount of fund balance, given the known decreases in fund balance that weren't displayed in that 11.2 million dollar audited figure that we'll most likely realize at the end of the school year.
It makes sense. It's like spending your savings account. There's no guarantee to put any money back in it.
Yes, ma'am.
Got it. Okay, thank you. My second question, oh, was again about transportation. Sorry, I'm going to go back to the buses. When we talked about the consolidation and we talked about the, the idea that the sped programs would then be equally dispersed between almost all the schools. And so we have student A who now can attend their own neighborhood school instead of having to be bused all the way across to where the, their services were provided. So now we have services at their local neighborhood school. Has that been, I mean, I know that's a lot, but has it kind of been mixed in the formula so that it's accounted for?
It hasn't. I think what's important to note is a lot of the benefits we talked about in school consolidation that were attributed to the plan that administration had put forward in closing five schools. You don't realize the same savings of the other end of it, nor can we guarantee that model that we had proposed will be delivered. And so we're still working through what special education will look like. It certainly won't look like what was up on the slide deck a couple of weeks ago in terms of having all programs at all schools. And so we're working through that. Special, our special education department is actually establishing a committee to help gather some larger stakeholder feedback on what that model will look like for next year. But I don't think it would be wise for the board to budget in any of those transportation savings that we might have realized into this budget, because it gets very different when you pull schools out of that consolidation list.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Ms. Julian and then Ms. Hardy, and then hopefully back to Mr. DeGraw.
I'll hold till the end.
Okay, Ms. Hardy?
Sure, kind of going off of Ms. Carol Hubbard's. This is my third year on the board, and we started out with a zero fund balance. And we worked really hard, making some really, really painful cuts to get the fund balance to what it is today. So kind of words of wisdom, Mr. Doran shares them. There's a reason we don't touch it. It is wise not to dip into it. Like we've heard, it is our insurance policy, and as tempting as it is, it's too low already. We can't do that. And I'm not lecturing. I'm, for the general public, this is why. It's a hard-earned lesson. And then to bring up history, I feel like I'm the board's historian. You know, other districts, you will notice around the state, have been using their fund balance to cushion their blows. They've been using it because they saved rainy day funds for exactly this case. I listened to a recorded meeting, Mr. DeGraw's very first year on the board, him pleading to the Assembly, it was a joint meeting at the time, being like, you don't understand, the fund balance is 30 million because we see what's happening. We've noticed that the state is not funding things. Things are going to get bad, and they're going to continue to stay bad for a while. We need this money as a rainy day fund. And the Assembly at that time, and the mayor was like, eh, we hear you, but we don't agree with you. And not only did they make us give them $8 million to fix capital projects, to fix roofs, which they have now uncategorically stated, that's our responsibility. The KIP is our problem. Don't you worry about it. But they made us pay them $8 million from our fund balance to fix the roofs. But then they also created a funding cap and made us spend down our fund balance till it was below the artificial cap they created. They forced us to spend our rainy day fund in 2018, and that is why we are where we are today. That is why we don't have extra fund balance like Anchorage and other communities. We did it to ourselves. Maybe it was a lack of understanding. I don't know. I wasn't on the board. Many of the Assembly members weren't. But it is just unfathomable, as I've looked at the numbers and looked at the history, to see how much Fairbanks put itself in this position, all of our own making, and what battle struggles have been between the school board and the Assembly. I am so grateful that right now, that is not the relationship we have, that we have a superintendent that works with our mayor, that we have an Assembly that is willing to come and listen to hours of school board meetings. But I would encourage us that it is worth us to keep doing that and to learn from the mistakes of our past so we don't repeat them. We are all in this ship together, and we can definitely drag ourselves down as much as we can lift ourselves out.
Mr. Doran, did you want to go before we finish up the last slides? It's okay if you do.
Go ahead, finish the slides.
Okay, Mr. DeGraw.
You'll still hear from me.
So yeah, just kind of a final, some final talking points on strategy going forward. And we've kind of hashed these items out here. Appreciate the history reminder. I had been with the district for like three months when that meeting happened. So it was right into the frying pan in that, back in 2018. But certainly, these are some kind of best practices, we feel, on how to keep us, how to, basically, we're doing hard work right now to right the ship. And, you know, Dr. Minett's response to Ms. Carol Hubbard's question of why not fund balance, it's, you know, we need to right the ship real bad. And, you know, using fund balance is akin to plugging a six-foot hole in the hole with some duct tape or, you know, some silly, some putty or something. You know, we're not truly riding the ship unless we, we write size expenditures to meet revenues. So, and the, bringing back the PTR side comes when that revenue, hopefully, we see a revenue increase, and that's how we can right the PTR problem. But conservative revenue estimates, I think that's getting to what Ms. Julian's points are, will provide some, some different scenarios that the board can look at. But making sure we have conservative, and I would add, realistic revenue estimates, realistic, high, high levels of likelihood, maintaining fund balance, we've talked about that. Appreciate the comments that have been made. And then lastly, and most importantly, is just trying to provide the best possible education we can with, with the constraints that we're dealing with. And, you know, finding the winds where we can find them, the swimming program, you know, little things here and there to, you know, high bang for the buck, things that we can do for, for the students in our district. So just wanted to finish with those, those talking points and those best practices for, as food for thought for the board as we, as we go through the next phase of the budgeting process. And, and yeah, hopefully, we, we do the intent, and this, I think, is kind of the backbone of administration's proposed budget, is doing the best we can, you know, with, with the resources, the not enough resources that we're, we're currently looking at. So advocate and, and, you know, push for as much as, as we can get for, for the students in our school district.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. DeGraw. I will go to Mr. Doran and then Ms. Julian.
Okay, build off the last slide there, the last point. Provide an excellent education within the possibilities ahead, rather than constraints. I, you know, as we look at this budget and try to provide a context with it, and then we're going to get into the weeds and of some parts, the weeds of this budget, not of the management, and have some great discussions coming in the next few weeks. But the last few weeks, I do indeed say, they were exciting. People put ideas on the table. We asked the community to come forward over the last month, month and a half, to share their ideas with us. Now, that might have worked great. It might have worked not so great. It might have been somewheres in between in terms of how people look at it. But there were a lot of great ideas that were put out there and that we need to build on. And we need to, you know, they will be fantastic in terms, and absolutely necessary to our discussion in terms of the context of what our in terms of the context of what our budget is doing and our strategic planning. And we'll need to, to get that. As we ask people to look at this budget and testify and give us their feedback on this budget, we, I'm hopeful to very much be alert to the ideas that they put on the table. And that's where those, those possibilities come. I do think we need to look at things a little bit more broadly. And, and I hope our conversations, as we get into debating different specifics in the budget, stay open rather than this is the way or that's the way. And I'm thinking just our conversation around activities. Things may be different now. They are different than when I was a principal. You can tell me how far off I am. But in terms of saying, well, we'll have to decide this sport or that sport. Schools were given an allocation for activities. They divvied it up. And they could say how much they were going to support one activity for another. Did they have the students to support that activity or another? Did they have staff members or somebody to supervise that, be a sponsor for it? We had schools where people said, oh, you know, this would be a great thing to do, activity with kids. I'll volunteer to do it. We'll do it. You know, we have others. Nope. We need to have it, and we have in contract, we have some guidelines for that. But how that money is used, not every school has had the same teams. They, not every school has the same activity groups. And I think it's important not to just focus activities as sports. They're extracurriculars broadly. And if we don't, we cannot do as all that we would like to do. How do we try and still keep some of that essence? I will take the example of, you know, band and orchestra, you know, at elementary. We didn't get rid of elementary music, but we did because we didn't have the people. But a lot of thought and coming of ideas was not, well, this is the only way to do it. But it was different ways to do it and how they can support to introduce students so that we're ready to middle school and get into band orchestra. Some of it is music teachers in the building, the staff working together with the principal and figuring out how to give those introductions. And that's varied from building to building. And then the community coming together and the summer camp thing that developed. So if we can capitalize and not get cut down into it's got to be this way or that way, but pool the ideas. And even if an idea is on there that that's not, well, this is, except that's the way it has to be. Can we broaden that out, look at it? And so that's what I'm hoping that as we go forward in the conversations and do get into the details, basically page by page of this, that, you know, what is, you know, this sped model. I've heard lots of things in terms of, yeah, every school, every day, K-5. Wait a minute. That's, some circumstance is good, some not. But we need to have some local empowerment to come up with and do some problem solving with us. And then as a board, how we support administration and, and the local schools. Okay, we can do, doesn't, you know, things can be different, and it's not less. It's just different.
Next, we have Ms. Julian, and then if anybody wants to get in the queue, if you have additional things you want to ask for before we wrap up for today and come back tomorrow, let me know. But for now, Ms. Julian?
Okay, thank you so much. This is my first year on the board, but this is not my first year working with a, a budget of this size professionally. I've done this for quite some time. I'm, I'm going to talk a little bit about what this budget assumes, which is a $16 million calculated risk based on an assumed flat funding of last year, taking that one-time funds, putting it into the BSA. It also, though, assumes a 1.5% decrease in enrollment, where last year, we had a 5% decrease in enrollment. So this, this budget is, this proposed budget, assuming the deficit of just about $15.9 million that we have to, that we have to bridge, is, is still relatively rosy. That's the term I'm going to use. And that makes me nervous. Our fund balance only having $11.2 million in it, give or take a couple million, based on current scenarios right now. That makes me nervous. However, when we look at, when, when I talk to legislators and things are said like, other districts need to fund, need to address their fund balance and spend down their fund balance before we really see that this is a big problem. When you, when you hear things like that repeated over and over again, but yet we are the ones that have done it. We are the canary in the coal mine for the state of Alaska. We are suffocating here. I made some very tough, some very, some very hard votes on this board to right-size our budget, to do the fiscally responsible thing in right-sizing and stabilizing our budget. When it comes down to a question of a $4.4 million out of, out of fund balance, to stabilize, to hold the line, as Mr. Doran has said, that's something that I would advocate for. Even though I am fiscally conservative, even though I have made these, because I have made these decisions in other areas to try to hold the line on class sizes. And I know that that's against administration's recommendation, but that, for me, is the line. And if we can, if we get to the end of the line for this at the 11th hour, and it comes down to a draw on fund balance to a certain dollar amount, maybe not 4 million, maybe it's only 2 million. Hopefully, it's only 2 million because we make some tough decisions as a board. I would advocate for that. But again, not until the very end. Past decisions that have hurt our fund balance, that's not my problem. My problem is making sure that the decisions that we make right now do not further hurt our students. We are in a situation with public education funding where there's been this excitement to siphon off the hole to serve niches. We've, that's maybe called vouchers in some states. We have public school charters in this state. We have correspondence programs. And when I look at our, what we offer, I will be asking administration to be looking at those niches because the, the effectiveness of every dollar should be, should be able to serve as many students as possible, not necessarily just niches. So to that point, I will be adding more to this list, but I would like to see North Star College, the total cost of that gone and put into our budget tool and perhaps even a presentation on North Star College. I would like to see a larger cut to administration. I, in the past, I know that there has been some conversations around defunding assistant directors that would equate to about 1.2 million. I'd like to see that in there. I'd like to have a conversation as a board. I'd like, when we said, when I personally said no and put forth the motion to remove Hunter, I wasn't saying no to closing an additional school. I was saying no to closing that school. So perhaps we need to add in another school closure because we know a hard number is that we have had a decrease in enrollment. And that's something that I think that if we're going to do this hard work right now and stabilize our budget, just because we said no doesn't mean that we, that it's a no forever. It was just a no to that school. And that's me personally speaking. We said no to Pearl Creek as a neighborhood school. We didn't say no to a STEM magnet, though, a STEAM magnet. I want to be very clear on that. That's not what we were asked to vote on. And that is a very exciting thing that I hope that we can continue to pursue, and we don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. That STEAM magnet idea is innovative. That STEAM magnet idea is fantastic. Was it the right location, based on our current fiscal situation? This board said no. Could we do that? And what would be the cost? Thank you for, somebody else adding to, asking to add the costs of adding additional charters. Those things are going to cost us more. But in our current facility footprint that we've decided, can we innovate? And is next year the time to innovate, or do we just not have the money right now? But I think that we need, the public needs to see that, and we need to see that as a board, too. Same thing. We've said no to SULCHA as remaining in the current model. We have said yes to a reduced funding model. But we've had some emails come through from SULCHA. Is that the right decision? Is that serving our students? Ms. Carol Hubbard asked that question tonight. I'd like, I'm, I'm hopeful that we can have that discussion as well. And then the last thing that I'm going to say is that we have continually said that not this year, we need to talk about secondary at some point, consolidation. We're not ready to do it this year. Do we need to do it this year so that we don't draw on fund balance? Do we need to consider an alternative model, model for Hutch? Is there even any savings there? If we were to remove Hutch as a standalone school and make that more of a VOTEC center, is that even possible? But these are the types of things where we have to balance, we have to balance and make hard decisions as a board on reducing the expenditures to right-size our financials, to, to build some stability in the budget, at the same time figuring out where are we going to grow and where can we grow? And when? And then, and then my last thing is for BEST Homeschooling, we know that that is, we know that that generates revenue. So where, why, I, I want to know more about why are we losing students from that program? And I do believe that if you look at the enrollment declines overall, and you also look at the increases in enrollment for correspondence programs that are out of district, there is, there are students that are living in our borough who are in those other programs. I would love to see, you know, what, how can we better serve those families and better serve those students so that we can potentially draw some students back there as well? I'm, I'm glad that we are going to be expanding a footprint for BEST in North Pole. I hope that that, we see an increase there because of course, that will be a revenue increase. But I don't necessarily know how we would add that into a budget sliding tool. But just as an overall request to the administration, a, a, a really hearty look at BEST and how can we better serve those students to potentially bring some of those correspondence students who are choosing correspondence schools over to BEST? And I think that there was a general assumption, as we were going through testimony, that the only way to bring back a correspondence student is to bring them back to a neighborhood school. Well, they're already correspondence students. So I think the easier thing would be to say, how can we bring a correspondence family from one program to another correspondence program versus back to that neighborhood school? Okay, thank you.
I'm going to throw myself in. I wanted to echo what Mr. Burgess said. I would like to see especially the BEST teacher at Two Rivers and what that might look like if we're also, what kind of funds would be needed to continue some of the programs that they have going out there? If that's just a BEST instructor, or if there's additional funds that would need to be considered? I wanted to ask a clarifying question. Mr. Burgess brought up activities, and that was on my list, too. Is what I'm gathering from the answer to his question, that if we want to see those cuts, we need to be specific, want to see what it would look like, we need to be specific about a specific activity to ask for that? Or are you advising us to, that we've cut enough?
I mean, personally, I wouldn't recommend a cut to activities. It's not in our proposed budget. I think activities provide a valuable part of holistic education and is the sole reason why some of our students come to school. But if the board wants to move in that direction, we can certainly provide additional information. To Mr. Doran's point, I do think it's important for the board to understand that it would be difficult to just hand a pot of money over to a high school principal and say, figure out the activities you want to do at your school. One, there's Title IX implications, and so we do need to have some consistency throughout the district for that. And two, you wouldn't want to wind up in a place where only West Valley has a basketball team because there's nobody else locally to play, and so you have increased transportation costs to, to actually play additional games. And so it gets rather complex, but we can go any direction that the board would like in terms of the way that they want to potentially approach a cut to activities.
And then my last request is, going off what Ms. Julian was saying, I would imagine that Ms. Beam has ideas. But I would be interested in seeing what it would look like, based off those that are in the trenches, what an investment in BEST looks like. Is that money for advertising? Is it money for specific programs that they wish that they could do and they can't? If, if that's something that there's a, a generic answer to, that you can put a dollar amount on, I would like to see that in Balancing Act. And that is all I have. Ms. Hardy is next in my queue. Ms. Carol Hubbard and Mr. Burgess, if either of you have anything you want to ask for. And then I see Mr. Doran's hand as well. So Ms. Hardy, please.
First piece to Ms. Julian's point about correspondence families. Something I have heard a lot about them being willing to switch is that many of them save up their allotment, and it's protected if you remain with the school that you do. Is there a way that we could factor in to make them whole? Switch to us, and we will, whatever was in that balance, we'll give it to you, too. And then maybe you come to us that way. So we're protecting them. And then they can have all the benefits of BEST enrollment, including access to our amazing facilities and our schools and our sports teams and all of that, as a pool to pull them back to the district. I don't know if it's legal or whatever, but there's my idea. The next is, I am formally requesting that the board add consideration of waiving policy 935.1, which is applications to charter schools shall be submitted to the school board no later than October 1st of the school year, prior to the school year during which the charter school is, will begin operation. Applications received after this deadline shall not be considered until the next school year. It goes on for a little bit more. Per our Board Biwall 9322, it takes three board members to formally state in writing or in an open meeting, and then that item shall be, not may, shall be added to the next agenda. We've had numerous emails from the public. I assume we will have testimony tomorrow night. It is our job to listen to our constituents, not to just decide we won't consider things because we don't want to.
Mr. Doran?
Ms. Carol Hubbard or Mr. Burgess has anything? Nope. Okay. All right. Then something that I will mention again tomorrow night for the public, but I think is really important. The Sunday's News-Miner opinion promotes misinformation at BEST, but it's waiving a, a flag that's been used against public education numerous times, currently being used against federal workers. But it says that the school district must continue its efforts to address internal financial inefficiencies. That is blatantly wrong, and I want to make that public because it's a direct reflection on our administration, our staff. And we have actually been working extremely hard to, in, over the years, nearly, over the last 20 years, I can document it, to look at how we're doing. And there are not financial inefficiencies. There are always things, we're looking to do things, but that's an erroneous allegation. They also, not in the allegation, but they have backwards that, that existing funds ensure that existing funds are utilized effectively as paramount before injecting additional resources. And that we need to be well aware that, as our conversation tonight is, we, unless we have resources, we can't do the job that we want as a community. And unless we invest extra into education, it's a 20-year loss. And so, but I am particularly concerned. And so, but I am particularly concerned at allegations that are not based on fact and are disrespectful to the people who work every day to do the best job possible. So, with that, I want to also say thank you for the conversation tonight. We put a lot of things on the table, and for the administration staff to be listening and to bring forth information that helps us, but that also helps us to be supportive of our district.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. Do we have anything else from? I don't see any hands. Melissa told me she's good. Okay. I think I don't need a motion. I can just adjourn. We are adjourned at 7:59 PM.